We'll bring this meeting of Peterborough City Council for April seventh, twenty five, twenty twenty five to order. Previously, we've, we've did our, we sent it our land acknowledgement. We had thirty seconds of reflection. I would ask those who are able, remove your caps for the singing of the National Anthem. Does any borough council have a disclosure pecuniary interest at this time? I want to say to our audience that I thank you for being patient. We had a, a short dinner break and thank you so much, as I said, showing patience to stay in the audience. Our next item of our agenda is registered delegations. I'd ask Mr. Larry McDonald to come forward for the twenty twenty five Community Project and Investment Grants Report. Right.
Your worship, I would respectfully request a little bit of a lenience in speaking, seeing how the docket is not full this evening with ten speakers, just to add some type of background to what I am going to be speaking about. Larry Lawrence A. McDonald, one, two, five, two, Carche Boulevard. Do you also want residents that I own, but I don't?
No, no, that's fine. Mr. McDonald, we try to keep, keep to five minutes, but if you're making a point, I will give you, I'll show you a little latitude.
I would appreciate that, your worship. I just want to say that I'm a new resident to Peterborough. I moved here from Barry to be closer to business interests and family in Perth. I was educated at Cornell University and the City College of New York, New York, specifically focusing on transit plans, design management, and all aspects of transit costing. I spent a quarter of a century in the transit business, employed in both the public and private sectors, dedicated to efficient cost, effective transit. I am currently a member of this city's transit committee. Over the years, I've sat on many boards, many committees, many councils across this province, combining my education along with employment experiences. So I want to speak to now, as a new resident, again, I own multiple properties across this province. I have never experienced back-to-back seven percent tax increases ever. So I moved to Peterborough. Sure, housing costs are smaller. We bought a modest home that I did not even see because I was out of the country. But my wife fell in love with it and.
Mr. McDonald, if we could kind of get you back to the, the investment grants, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt.
No, 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 no.
Just want to kind of steer this ship here a bit.
Yep, 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 I'm looking at the time, Jeff. Okay, so this, this council has some huge economic issues facing them in the coming years. Forty million for a police station, sixty million for the transit garage. All of these groups that come before council to ask for generosity, I think the taxpayer is bearing the brunt of this. And I'm sure they're all very good causes, but at some point, they've got to be self-sufficient. They've got to stand on their own two feet rather than coming with their hand out to the taxpayers of the city of Peterborough. Again, they're all good causes, but where does it stop? But one point, one point that I briefly want to speak to in my last minute and twenty is the business mindset of giving five hundred thousand dollars, interest-free for a new roof. I'd like to know where I stand in line to get that type of generosity. Also, the amount of money that is being lost from it being interest-free, anyone, I, it could be a hundred and fifty, depending on the rate that you're going to get on an investment. It could be three percent, it could be five percent. So that could be anywhere within a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Sorry, am I boring you? Oh, sorry. But anyways, that is the point that I want to make, that the taxpayers are bearing the brunt of, and again, they're all good groups. My wife and I reached out to Lakefield College for a donation that, sorry, we purchased a block of tickets for the upcoming meal, to raise money to help a worthy cause in Barry. I think these groups should maybe look at that business plan rather having, you name it, golf tournament, pizza night. Anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald, and thank you for your service to the Transit Liaison Committee. It's very important. And we do have a question. Oh, hold it, Larry, don't run away. Counselor Burke, please.
Thank you very much, your worship, through you to Mr. McDonald. So let's just say for argument's sake that we cut out this grant component from the budget. I think you might have taken us from your example of seven percent to six point nine 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 eight percent. Do you have any other suggestions on how we could get the tax rate to a place where you're comfortable with?
As an old government employee, Alex, I keep everything. So the response I received from you, because I own property in your ward, was the hundred and forty, hundred and forty-one thousand wouldn't make your words, wouldn't make a dent in the overall operating budget of this city. To me, as a taxpayer, that is an insult. I don't care whether it's five thousand, ten thousand, fifty thousand. You've got to start somewhere. Drive around this city and look at the state of the roads. That would be top of my list. Police, walk down the, through the downtown where I'm at the, the no-frills, and here's a guy injecting another guy in between his toes. I'm an educated person, but I cannot, for the life of me, understand how this happens.
Through your worship, all right, Mr. McDonald, do you remember how much the number was that I gave you that?
It was a hundred and forty, hundred and forty-one.
Mr. Mr. Merritt, through you to Mr. McDonald, do you remember the number in, in a percentage that I gave you? What it would mean to our budget if we took away the funding for these programs? I think it was a point, so it was a decimal point of a percent.
Alex, respectfully, you've got to start somewhere. Whether it's two percent, whether it's five percent, whether it's six percent. The number of people that I've spoken to in this town, and I'm, believe it or not, I'm kind of a people person. I've talked to a lot of business people. I had a lot to do with bringing the Berry Colts to Barry. They just shake their head at some of the decisions made around this table. I had a long discussion this morning with, let's say, an RV dealer. And he, he just, yeah, I, I, I don't know what to say to you, but I think we have to be a lot more financially responsible with the taxpayers' money. I think you would agree, the roads are beyond repair. You've got a zoo up there. I had an engineer, a civil engineer friend, golfer, he walked around that, that parking lot. He said, you've got maybe two years left. So there is a huge amount of money that now that the city looks, is, is together with the zoo, you've got to pay for that.
Anything further, Counselor Burke?
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Mr. McDonald? Larry, thank you very much for being with us this evening.
I hope you get a hole in one this year.
Hopefully, I will. The next, we have a number of presenters for the Climate Change Action Plan two point oh. The first one is William Eman. William, please. Mr. Eman, if you could give your name and address for the public record, you have five minutes to make a presentation. At the end of four, we'll let you know that you have one minute left. Please proceed, sir.
So my name is Will Eman, and I live at three twenty Elias Avenue. The world seems hopeless. Temperatures are rising, everyone is starving, and storms are raging, but yet Peterborough shines out from it all. As I referred to earlier, my name is Will Eman, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion on the Climate Change Action Plan two point oh. As I refer to my opening statement, I would like you to imagine life thirty years from now. U.S. councillors had the courage to accept this plan despite many people saying that it wouldn't work or that it would be too expensive. Not only did it save over two hundred million dollars, Peterborough made it work. Way back in twenty twenty-five, when we started this plan, we started on a journey to net-zero greenhouse gas emissions. We improved electric transport and improved building codes to become greener. Peterborough becomes one of the greenest cities in all of Canada. Everyone, everyone thinks it back to this moment, that day back in March or in April of twenty twenty-five. I don't envy you, councillors. You have a really tough decision to make that will dramatically impact Peterborough's future. I personally think it would be for the best if you pass this plan because not only will it help the world become safer and healthier, but it'll also have the added bonus of making Peterborough just better. Growing up in this day and age, I'm full of worries and uncertainties about my future. Many kids in my generation, with all the stuff happening in the news, were terrified. We don't even know if we'll live a full life. The one thing that I do have to point out, though, is the fact that everyone's always saying it's the fault of the generations before us that the world is the way it is today. I don't think that's entirely true because my generation lives the exact same ways as the generations before us. We're just as wasteful, and when we're asked to do something about it, we don't want to do anything since we don't think it's up to us. That's why I'm here today, because I want to do my part by accepting my responsibility in all of this. But I can't make change alone. The way to come at this is not by playing the blame game, but by getting municipal governments to incentivize greener action. That's exactly what this plan does. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Eman, and I know you'll have a long, productive, and contributory life here in Peterborough.
Thank you.
Any question, oh, hold on, you may have, we may have some questions, grave? Questions? Questions, thank you very much. Lena Skinner, please, Lena? Lena, if we could have your name and address for the public record, five minutes to make a presentation.
Hi, my name is Lena Skinner, and I live on four eight six Albertus Avenue. On April twenty-second, nineteen seventy, U.S. Senator Gaylord Nelson created Earth Day as a way to raise awareness of our environmental impacts moving forward into the future. Thirty-eight years later, on April twenty-second, two thousand and eight, I was born. My name is Lena Skinner. I'm sixteen years old, and I'm here tonight to tell you why I want you to approve the Climate Change Action Plan. You're probably familiar with Peterborough youth advocating for climate action. As those of you who were on council at the time heard delegations from students my age in two thousand and nineteen pushing Peterborough to declare a climate emergency, which you did. But six years later, we're still pushing for climate action. The climate crisis is not a new concept, but the difference between when Earth Day was created and now is that in nineteen seventy, we were giving warnings, and today we're facing consequences. So why are we waiting for some environmental apocalypse to happen? Climate change isn't going to just strike us down one day. Its merciless attacks on environmental and human well-being have only gotten more concentrated and frequent the longer we have waited and contributed to the issue. But that doesn't mean we're doomed. Although the past ten years have been the hottest on record, they've also seen the greatest growth in renewable and sustainable innovation, solar panels, electric vehicles, conservation agriculture. The belief that change is inevitable is the mechanism itself when it comes to fighting climate change, and the Climate Change Action Plan perfectly sets up how we can implement and accelerate that change. I challenge you tonight to think past numbers and statistics, past GDP and investments, but to the welfare of our city. This plan is so much more than a metric. It's a major step towards developing a healthy, wealthy, thriving community. I challenge you to think about your grandchildren, your children, or anyone young in your life, and acknowledge that you have the trajectory of their life in this city in your control right now. When you vote for the Climate Change Action Plan, you vote for them. There are obvious benefits that come from significantly reducing our carbon footprint, whether it's cleaner air and less waste. But through its co-benefits, this plan is the most equitable thing U.S. council can do for Peterborough. It makes homes climate resilient, cool in the summer, warm in the winter, and more affordable for everyone. It makes clean, safe forms of alternative transportation for those who do not have a driver's license, a car, or just enjoy their bike or the bus, more accessible. It brings life to our neighborhoods with trees that not only sequester carbon, but make our streets cooler with the shade, inviting both biodiversity and Peterborough residents to get outside and active. These are just some of the more immediate benefits. Imagine what Peterborough could look like for future generations if we start now. The Climate Change Action Plan leaves little room for hesitation. It gives us the solutions we need, how to use them, and how they will benefit us in a multitude of ways, from millions of dollars in savings, to secure housing, to electric transportation. There's nobody in this city, human or animal, present or future, that will not see a benefit from the implementation of this plan. Peterborough currently has the opportunity to re-envision what a green community looks like and become a climate leader for other cities to look up to in the power of the council. And I, along with the rest of my community, want to see it come to fruition, not go to waste. When I turn seventeen this month, I want to celebrate more than just my birthday, but on Earth Day, the initiative of my council, my city, coming together to create a greener, more secure future for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your impressive presentation. There may be some questions, questions, questions. Thank you very much. My next ask is that Guy Hatchett to come forward with a PowerPoint. Guy, please. The PowerPoint is being loaded up. Guy, if we could get your name and address for the public record, please.
Absolutely. My name is Guy Hatchett, and I live at eighteen Dancourt Street in Lakefield. And I am here from, for our grandchildren, and I'd like to attempt to follow after that wonderful presentation right there. Next slide, please. I'm running it. Oh, my, what do I have to do? Okay, okay, so here's the talking point, here are the talking points that we've, we've all, we've all heard all about all tonight. So I'm not even going to talk about those. The, 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 the plan, if implemented in its entirety, will make for a healthier environment. It addresses transportation and business emissions. It saves money for the community. I wish it really was the billion dollars that we heard about when we saw the report because a billion just sounded so great when Dr. Evil said it. In any case, we still save a lot of money if we, if we implement all of this stuff. But I'd like mostly to talk about the fact that, for our, oh, I'd like to thank, first of all, some of the councillors and the questions that you asked during the consultant's presentation. Especially, I'd like to focus on Mr. Riel's questions. You asked about not letting this, this plan sit on the shelf, and I'm afraid that's what happened to the twenty sixteen one. It mostly sat on the shelf. We did get some actions out of it, and we got the climate emergency out of it. But one of the things that can happen that can keep it from going on the shelf is to implement one of the points solidly that was in the climate emergency, which is a climate lens. And I thank you for mentioning that, and also you, Keith. It was wonderful to mention that, and that's one way to keep this from disappearing into the, into nothingness. But mostly, what I want to point out is that we are not alone. This is a graphic that somebody made for me, which shows a, a loving family in the center, and it shows all kinds of local organizations which care just as much as we do about climate, even though their main issue may not be climate. They're, they, they, they come from arts, culture, environmental, commercial, educational, spiritual, social justice, and housing components. You can see it every week outside your office. You can see people over on the corner over there feeding the homeless. You can see people over here who are active, active in peace, in a peace vigil. You can see it in grassroots organizations formed to build tiny homes. You can see it everywhere. All of these things are actions that are intersecting with climate change. You can see it in the Rotary Club, who has for a hundred years sponsored Camp Coortha. You can see it in the Coortha Land Trust, which has now formed a regional conservation and climate partnership. So we're not alone. We're here to do it tonight, but all those other organizations care very deeply about the environment, including the climate. So for all these reasons, I urge you to pass the Climate Change Action Plan tonight. And next time I come, I'd like to have this a little higher so I don't have to bend over. I know there's a button, but I don't know where it is.
Thank you, Guy, thank you very much.
Much, everybody.
There may be some questions, questions for Guy. Thank you very much, sir, there's no questions. Carolyn Tennant, please. Ms. Tennant, if we could get your name and address for the public record, and you'll have five minutes to make a presentation.
Hello, I'm Caroline Tennant, four nine five Gilmore, and I'm speaking as a concerned citizen on a matter that's really important to me. I'm sorry, I'll probably repeat things that have been said, but I want to say them anyway. Thanks to all the members of the city, staff and councillors, who, and the people in the community have worked on this plan. I clearly support adopting Peterborough's Climate Change Action Plan two point zero. Peterborough, like all Canadian municipalities, plays a critical role in the national effort to achieve net-zero emissions by twenty fifty. Municipalities have influence over approximately fifty percent of greenhouse gas emissions. What we decide as a city, and you adopt as a city council tonight, has the potential to over time reduce half of the emissions from this community. What our cities do individually and together to address climate change can set the agenda for communities and governments everywhere. What we do in Peterborough has an impact and matters. With approximately eighty percent of Canadians living in cities, it's crucial that we focus on the potential of municipal governments to curtail climate change and to respond to impacts we cannot now change. Like Peterborough, approximately six hundred and fifty Canadian municipal governments have declared a climate emergency, and the majority are developing climate action plans to help advance local effort, efforts towards significant reductions. It is clear to us all by now the tragic possibility of more and more loss if we fail to tackle climate change. The more we fail to act, the more we face the increasing intensity of floods, fires, storms, loss of life, loss of animals and plants and insects and birds, and damage to our air, land, and water. Our home and our sense of identity are threatened. We know we need to get to net zero by twenty fifty. This plan provides a way forward. We must act now so that much that we love will be protected. In dire circumstances, it helps to have a plan. We need a practical approach to the problems we face, and the authors of the report have created an excellent blueprint for such a positive move forward. The plan aligns with the good ideas of many other communities in its big moves around combating urban sprawl, promoting active transportation and public transit, and support, supporting an energy transition to non-fossil fuels sources. It could do even more to protect biodiversity, green spaces, and local food production. And given that this is a climate emergency, it could be strengthened by ensuring some of the improvements are required and not voluntary. Peterborough's Climate Change Action Plan now needs to be updated, strengthened, celebrated, championed, financed, financed, and implemented. While following the plan will save a great deal of money, it will initially cost money to implement. It is essential we spend the money now. If not, it's as if a tree has fallen through our roof, and I apologize for that reference recently, for recent events, and we say we can't afford to fix it. Maybe it's not easy, but clearly we must. Things will only get worse if we don't. That is much of the situation we are in today. We have failed to take sufficient action and are paying a high price for that, and a price that will only get higher if we fail to take action. Municipalities are well-placed to be involved. Local governments are closer to residents and can provide the support needed to make necessary changes. The new compost program in Peterborough is an example of a successful move forward. I feel really good about and well-supported in succeeding with this compost plan. It will be the same with the shift to heat pumps, the use of solar panels, and other sustainable actions. Having the support at a local level makes all the difference, which doesn't rule out, as the plan notes, finding provincial and federal funding. It matters that we take a leadership role in tackling the severity of the climate crisis with the urgency and organization it deserves. We create a more optimistic community by taking genuine proactive action. When young people, people of all ages, face this crisis and think no one is doing anything or not enough, it can lead to a feeling of lack of safety. It can lead to a sense of defeat and hopelessness, anger and anxiety, and alienation from our communities. We want the opposite of this. We need an engaged and positive community, one in which our leaders do the right thing and make good decisions. We want to be the kind of place that protects those who live here now, as well as generations to follow. We need to move forward with a good plan. Let's adopt and implement it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. Is there any question for Caroline? Thank you very much. I apologize if I don't get the pronunciation quite correct. Navin Gori? Do we have your name and address for the public record, please, sir?
Navin Gori?
I was close.
Eight nine three Abbey Lane.
Please proceed.
So I'm sure many of you have seen a movie that involves time travel. In these movies, the characters go, they build a time machine, they go back in time, and then they do something in the past. Now, what happens when they do something in the past? You notice maybe they just look at one person the wrong way. They give someone the wrong idea. They move one twig, and this somehow severely alters everything that happens in the character's present. These movies show us that this tiny action in the past has a massive implication in the present. What they don't show us is that a small action in the present can lead to a massive positive future implication. Today, I want to tell you why the Climate Change Action Plan, which is by no means a small action, could have very impressive consequences for my future. So this plan, very soon, will have big impacts. Um, I want to go through, um, some that I will experience personally, um, probably, uh, other young people. So, um, first of all, I'll talk about housing. Housing is an issue that a lot of people talk about in Peterborough. It's quite pertinent. So, um, this plan would affect it in a lot of ways. By emphasising high density housing, uh, it'll become much more affordable to own a home. And it will be much cheaper to own a home because of, uh, home retrofits, which allow for, um, uh, less costs in the, like a continuous cost. It also saves businesses money. There's commercial retrofits, vehicle retrofits. These are all things that will save Peterborough citizens money. Another thing that having dense housing will help with is transportation. Transportation is something that I'm very passionate about. Numerous studies have shown that young people want more transportation options. We don't want to be limited to just having to drive a car. And I definitely feel this personally, as I, uh, I'm unable to have a full licence. I bike around a lot, I walk, I take the bus. This is something that most young people want to continue doing even after they can drive a car. In this plan, there's a lot that specifies how we can make transportation better. And this will also benefit our city in that we will have, uh, quieter streets. And I think it will be a much nicer place just to be around. You know, there's not always cars rushing by, it's quiet. And it's, it's, uh, I think a lot of people my age would be much happier raising children in a city where it's quiet, it's safe and the air is clean. Is that? Also, this plan has, uh, massive implications, um, in terms of just the environment of our city. I think when people visit here, when people are walking around, you want to live in a city where you can walk down the road, you see trees everywhere. You see the cycling lanes. There's safe streets. You're not worried that you're going to get hurt crossing the road. This is a city that I want. I think it's a city that everyone would want. This plan would help with that as well. I think this plan would have a major, uh, legacy. In this fight against climate change, I think many people have brought up important points about the severity of the crisis. I think in the, in 25 years, people are going to look back, they're going to say, Peterborough was a leader. Peterborough was the first city to implement these changes in a meaningful way, in a concrete way. And I want to live in a city where 25 years from now, I can say that was my city, my city councillors that did that. This plan is not just a short term, uh, waste of money. It's a long-term investment in the future that everyone will appreciate. It will create a legacy. And this plan, I think, will be a huge part of your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nevin. There may be some questions, questions. Thank you very much. Jack Lokes, please, Jack? Jack, if we could have your name and address for the public record, you have five minutes.
Lokes Road. Lokes Road, Jack Lokes.
Go ahead, sir. Jack, you have a video for us?
Uh, yes.
Roll it.
Uh, can I say a few words before I do? Uh, I am part of the youth leadership and sustainability class. We are a group of teens that are concerned about the changing environment. And we are also very excited about the Peterborough Climate Change Action Plan. We spent a couple of months creating a video, um, that shows what Peterborough might look like after we implement this plan, uh, that I would like to show with you. I would also like to note that after some recent changes to the plan, uh, we're going to have to change the title of our video.
Do you want Peterborough to save $1 billion? We are KPR's Youth Leadership and Sustainability Class and we are your future. The city's new Climate Change Action Plan calls on all of us to step up to this challenge.
We had an old plan from 2017 that had some issues making it hard to implement. A bold new plan that will take the city to almost net zero greenhouse gas emissions will come before City Council in February.
This plan is an important opportunity for our city. We have the chance to join thousands of communities around the world in trying to create a more secure future. Our new local plan will impact so many aspects of our lives in positive ways. Here, we're going to focus on three things. First of all, housing. Housing is important to all of us, whether we own, rent or struggle to find a roof overhead. We all understand the tolls of energy bills and so does the new Climate Change Action Plan.
It would call for higher energy standards on new homes as well as financially supporting retrofitting projects. This includes the installation of heat pumps and the replacement of windows and doors for proper insulation on homes already built.
Heat pumps are a really efficient heating system that produces very few greenhouse gases. Better insulation ensures that you don't lose more on that heating and cooling system.
So if we go through with the Climate Change Action Plan, homeowners and renters will save much more money in the long run.
Now, everyone can afford a cool summer and toasty holidays, but we can't spend all of our time inside.
During COVID, we weren't able to go over to friends' houses, but we were still able to hang out by using green space to talk and walk our dogs.
Ever since then, I've spent more time outside because it's calming and it helps me connect with nature and my pets. It's a great third space to hang out.
Green space is beneficial for everyone's mental health. I love I have a place where I can sit down, relax and take a deep breath of fresh air. It's also beneficial for physical health. I can go outside and jog with my dog instead of sitting at home all day.
Having trees helps you create clean air, cool down cities by providing shade and work to shelter when the weather's bad. Preserving our green spaces means that we can have more animals living in our community, improves aesthetic value, biodiversity and builds resilience to climate change.
Once you get out of the parks and onto the streets, you'll notice Peterborough is a very car-centric city. But young people want real sustainable transportation options. They want to be able to drive their cars, use public transit and feel safe as a pedestrian or cyclist.
Someone who doesn't have his licence, biking is how he gets around. However, it's tricky to find a safe and efficient way through the city. This plan will ensure that I and other psychos have a safe route through Peterborough's bike lanes and infrastructure.
Four people on bikes means less people in cars, which means more open, free and moving streets for everyone. And it doesn't stop at just bikes.
How about transportation gives people a chance to relax? They can look at their phone, write an email, they can take their eyes off the road. You can't do that in a car. As best as make the switch to electricity, they'll be much fire, making the much more enjoyable we're at.
Transportation currently accounts for 50% of Peterborough's greenhouse gas emissions, but the Climate Change Action Plan will help fix that. By improving and electrifying these alternative means of transportation, Peterborough will improve air quality, reduce its greenhouse gas emissions and make transportation accessible for everyone.
The consultants who created this plan calculate that if we can implement all of these things and the other elements of the plan, we can save our community $1 billion in the next 25 years.
The city of Peterborough has so much to gain from this opportunity, but it will only happen if our councillors approve it. And to do that, they need to hear from you.
We know what we want. What do you want? Now, it's up to you.
Thank you very much. councillor Burke, please. Councillor Baldwin, councillor Riel.
Yeah, just through the, through the chair to, um, Jack and Nevin and Lena and William. I just want to say that, um, this is probably the most moving council meeting that I've been to. And, um, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm inspired by your energy. I feel, I feel like lifted by your presence and the way that you've engaged with us. Um, and it's just been a really beautiful and memorable experience for me that, um, I'll, I'll truly hold on to. And, um, it makes me really optimistic, um, for our future. So thank you very much for coming.
Councillor Baldwin and councillor Riel. Councillor Baldwin, please.
Yeah, three questions, your worship. Um, thanks for the presentations from all the students. Um, what's the high school complement of your class? You're not all from the same high school, is that correct?
Uh, no, we're from multiple, uh, schools from the, I think, the KPR District School Board.
Okay. A second question, is this the culminating task of, of your class or is this just a special project?
Uh, this was just a special project.
So Mr. Douglas isn't going to give you a little extra bonus for coming to City Council?
Uh, unfortunately not, no.
I better give him a call. Yeah, the last question I had was, is there any significance to the, the coloured folders? I would have thought you might have used green or blue, but you've used orange. I'm wondering if that has any significance with respect to the video.
Uh, I believe the folder was just what Cam had laying around in the files.
It's like the school board's got a bunch of problems. Thank you, your worship.
Councillor Riel, please.
It's called reusing.
Councillor Riel, through this worship, William, Lena, Evan and Jack, thank you very much for being here tonight. Um, certainly it heartens me that we have a future. And when you see young people like this come up and speak from the heart, it sends a message to me as your elected official that I better do my job. I also want to thank you a couple of months ago when you invited me to your class to come and speak. And it was glad to see the class here tonight and Mr. Douglas. And certainly thank you very much for coming tonight and presenting your presentation. Thank you very much. Well deserved.
Thanks, councillor Riel. Any further comments, question? Jack, at your class speech, you were very effective. This is the stack of telephone messages that you sent to my office. I, I won't, I won't give you a quick count, but I could say it's multiple. So I really want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you for the, uh, you for the time and, uh, this opportunity.
Thank you very much for being with us. Mark Bullock, you're next. Mr. Bullock, please. We could have your name and address, sir, for the public record.
My name is Mark Bullock. I live at 884 Valley View Drive, Peterborough. Long time since I graduated. I, I, I really admire the, uh, the energy and commitment of these, of these young people. They're a tough act to follow, but, uh, I'll say what I have to say. The city of Peterborough first set goals for reducing its emissions of greenhouse gases in 2016, almost a decade ago. It updated these in 2019, setting new targets which aligned with the scientific consensus on the level of emissions reduction, which was necessary to prevent catastrophic global warming and climate change. In 2023, staff determined that the existing Climate Change Act, Climate Change Plan was inadequate to the purpose of achieving our emission reduction targets. And the process of developing a new Climate Action Plan was begun. Climate Change Action Plan 2.0 charts a course for Peterborough to do its share, to play its part in the task of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and lessening the severity of climate change. It also points to a future in which we can employ all our, of our natural advantages and the intelligence and skills of our people in the exciting transition to a future of clean energy with all of its challenges and its opportunities. And it shows us a way forward to a city which is more just and equitable, cleaner, healthier, more beautiful and more prosperous. I and many others have high hopes for this new Climate Change Action Plan. We know that it is only a map, a set of directions, and it will depend for its success on the resolution, resolution and imagination of many people over the course of many years. But it does show a way forward. I would like to add that while I hope that the plan will bring change, renewal and progress, I do not see it as a radical proposal. It is not a historic departure from what came before. The previous Climate Change Action Plan and many measures taken by the city over the years to mitigate climate change. Nor is it the vision of a single or single-minded group or individual, but the product of an extensive process of consultation with many groups, including public health authorities, public utilities and businesses. The actions recommended in Climate Change Action Plan 2.0 are eminently moderate and reasonable. Nothing in the plan goes beyond what might be adopted by any other mid-sized Ontario municipality. Some of these actions refer to programs which are already operating and or under development in Peterborough, such as the solar, such as solar power generation by Kofi, the Home Energy Efficiency Program, composting and tree planting. The Transportation Master Plan, already approved by council and the Alternative Fuel Study, already funded by council and nearing completion, are incorporated into the plan. The plan does not call for the city to act alone, either in funding or designing policies and programs. Rather, it calls for the municipal government to work in cooperation with others, including builders and property owners, business associations, the Chamber of Commerce, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, trade schools and members of the community at large. The report recommendations are similarly moderate and reasonable. Staff will be directed to pursue implementation of the plan subject to future budget approvals. Council will retain control over the allocation of money for implementation measures. Staff will also be directed to explore opportunities to form partnerships with external organisations and seek external funding opportunities, actions which staff would be expected to take in forwarding, in forwarding any major municipal project. Peterborough long ago accepted the reality of climate change and has taken a number of steps to meet the challenge of reducing its emissions of greenhouse gases. It has laid the necessary groundwork in long-term planning and implemented a number of important initiatives. The Source Separated Organics Programme, the Zero Emissions Fire Station, investments in water power and solar energy, tree planting and others. Climate Change Action Plan 2.0 is the essential next step in the city's response to climate change. The plan's approval will be a far sighted and prudent measure, which will help the city meet the challenge of climate change and embrace the opportunities of the energy transition. I hope that you will vote to adopt Climate Change Action Plan 2.0.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bullock. There may be some questions, questions. Councillor Dugay, please.
Thank you, your worship. Actually, this is, uh, less a question than it is a compliment. Mark, I'd like to acknowledge and thank you for, I think you've been at many council meetings as all of council. Uh, but I'd like to thank you for your ongoing attendance and vigilant monitoring of this, uh, subject matter. And, uh, to councillor Riel and Burke, the comment about the climate change, like the commentary and reports. You and I have chatted about this before, I've chatted with staff. And I, I would welcome seeing that as part of our report, but thank you for your ongoing interest. Um, and I didn't mean to diminish what the students said, but thank you. But to you in particular, Mark, you've been at all of our meetings and I appreciate your attendance. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Mark, for your presentation. I was remiss, um, I'm going to go through our order of agenda this evening, the approval of minutes of February 18th, 2025 and February 24th. Councillor Crowley, councillor Vasiliadis, comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. I would next go to item nine, consent items. Anybody wants to speak to 10A? 10A? B? Want to speak to 10B? 10C? And C? 10D?
10D? Apologise, your worship. I would like to speak to 10B.
Apologize, your worship. I would like to speak to 10B very briefly. Thank you.
10B, yeah, it's already been identified. Nope, not at all. 10C. No, we already did it. 10D? 10E? So would somebody like to move A, E, D, and C? councillor Burke? That's our councillor. Luchika, comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. That is carried. councillor Hickey, you want to speak to 10B, which is the Climate Change Action Plan?
Uh, thank you, worship. Yes, I just asked that we, uh, separate out each item for a vote, please.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, thanks, your worship, but just take us a bit of time here just to separate those out.
Uh, then councillor Dugay, you wanted to speak on B?
Yeah, yes, uh, very briefly, your worship. My, um, uh, recollection of the report and understanding the report, I do think are described as seven big moves. And one of the last, one of the items spoke to a forest canopy. And, um, you know, expediting and improving our forest canopy. Um, and given our most recent ice storm event, it strikes me that this will, will become and has to become a critical priority of our, of our community. We have lost mature maple trees. And they take a long, long time to grow. So I'm hoping that we can find with our federal and provincial government, your worship, and your ongoing efforts, necessary funds to help expedite, uh, forestry, our urban canopy, our street trees and the like. Uh, it's not to say we should spend more money, just we've got to spend a lot more attention and energies on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dugay. Uh, any further comments? I, just to respond, councillor Dugay, one of the benefits of our, our park redevelopment plans is a real emphasis on planting new trees and improving our canopy. Uh, can I get someone to move a B, and then we'll go through it one by one? councillor Vassiliadis, councillor Crowley? And we're going to go through them one at a time, starting with A. And if Natalie, we can get that loaded up, uh, that would be great. Crowley?
Sure.
Oh, it's already up, councillor. 10B is up to vote? And that's carried. We'll next go to B. And that's carried. Item C. This is carried. Item D. Item C is carried. Item D. That was D. Item E, sorry. Item E is next. Item E is carried. Item F. Item F is carried. Item G. Item G is carried. councillor Purnell, did you want to quickly say something?
I did. Thank you very much, Mayor Leo.
Go on to the next item?
Yeah, for the opportunity, um, I just wanted to extend, uh, an invitation to all of the students and other people in the room, uh, are watching, who are so concerned, as we all are. Uh, and further to the comments by my colleague here about our urban tree canopy. Uh, planting trees is very, very important, and I encourage each and every one of you to participate in the green-up programs with tree planting. Um, councillor Dugay and I also organize a Trees for Peterborough event each year. This will be our fifth year. And these trees are paid for partially by the, the city, but mostly by private donation. And they are planted by volunteers where it'll be over 600 trees that we plant again this year. And we need volunteers to come and help us. It'll be in September. Please watch for the exact date and location. I personally invite each and every one of you to join us. Thank you for the opportunity, mayor.
Thanks very much, councillor Purnell. Uh, our next item is item F. councillor Baldwin, please. Report coming out of the in-camera session. It's already up there? It's already up there? Can read it if you'd like me to read it, but if not, uh... You're moving it? We have a second, councillor Dugay. Comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. councillor Real, the next one is yours. Item G. And it's posted? That's carried? And we'll post your motion up there?
Thanks, your worship. That's loaded there now.
It's moved by councillor Real. We have a second, second, councillor Baldwin. Comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. Next item of business, we have approval bylaws, uh, 12A, 12B, 12C, 12D, bylaw 25-060 to bylaw 25-063. If we could have a mover, councillor Purnell, councillor Dugay. Comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. And that's carried. Other business? Other business? No other business. Someone would like to move the confirmation bylaw? councillor Purnell, councillor Dugay, we'll go to a vote. That's carried. Adjournment. councillor Burke, councillor Vassiliadis. Man, you gentlemen are quick. We'll go to a vote. That is carried. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, staff. Thanks to the people in our audience this evening.